Well, we're gonna, Barbara's not here tonight, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, six P M., and we are meeting in the council chambers. Candace, roll call, please.
Kathy Cop?
Here.
Jason Arts is excused. Lynn Parrot?
Yeah.
Todd Casper?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
And Barbara Doss is excused.
Okay, first order of business is a consideration of consent agenda. In our packets, we have council minutes from May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, the regular meeting, payment of bills, the financial report for May, appointments to boards and commissions. I do not have any. Clint, was there nothing? Okay. Licenses, a number of them. Junk dealer, a one- and two-year operator license to sell and serve alcohol, taxi driver, temporary Class B to serve fermented malt beverages to Friends of Roundtree Gallery at one-twenty West Main Street on Saturday, June twenty-fourth, from noon to five, for an artist reception. Also, a temporary Class B to serve fermented malt beverages to Platteville J C's at Legion Park on July fourth, from noon to midnight for the Fourth of July event. Temporary Class B to serve fermented malt beverages to Friends of Roundtree Gallery and City Park Gazebo on Saturday, twenty-sixth. And we have a note that the time has changed, and it is from noon to four for their chalk and cheese fest. And then annual fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquor license renewals. Then we have permits. We have five permits, a banner, one for June twentieth through July fourth for the Mining and Ronald Jameson Museums Heritage Day on July fourth, July twenty-eighth to August twelfth for the Mining and Ronald Jameson Museums Mine Day on August twelfth, fireworks for the Fourth of July, parade for U W Platteville Homecoming Parade on Saturday, October seventh, starting at ten A M. The Run Walk for the Fourth of July Committee, Edward Jones, Fourth of July Run Walk on Tuesday, July four, starting at seven thirty A M. Street closing for Pine Street between Virgin and Cora Street on Tuesday, July four, from seven thirty A M. to ten thirty A M. By the Fourth of July Committee and Edward Jones. And then a resolution twenty-three eighteen, application for exemption from the levy of any county library tax. Any questions? Otherwise, we entertain a motion.
I move to approve all items listed under the consent.
I second it.
Okay. Candace will vote.
Cop?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. There.
Nope.
Anything tonight? Okay. Reports. Board Commission Committee Minutes, police and fire. I have nothing to add. Library Board, Lynn?
If I didn't bring it. There, there, oh. So, there's, there is something, oh. We have a concern, the library had a, don't talk about the school board now adding the bus stop in August on the corner of Elm and Main. And there's some, gonna be some discussion about that later. Had a lot of discussion about this kind of rowdy kids, but other than that, yeah, nothing.
Okay. Historic Preservation, oh, yeah, Historic Preservation Commission, Ken?
No additions to the minutes.
Housing Authority Board, Lynn?
No addition.
Okay. Other reports, the Water and Sewer Financial Report for May, April Financial Report for May, the Task Force for Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Update, and Department Progress Reports. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, comment? Okay, then we move into information and discussion. First off, resolution for Community Development Investment, C D I Grant Application for Armory Renovations.
We, did we cover Department Progress? Did we cover Department Progress Reports?
Yes.
We did. Oh, I had a brief comment here somewhere. Fire station, Typle. He's not here to receive my comment.
He's actually at Township of Harrison. We were just presenting there.
You said here, redesign of a single-story store fire facility. So relay that that is a Typle, and a spell check does not catch that type of thing there. I assume the word is supposed to be a single story.
Single story, correct. That's one of what we're trying to arrive at is one of our options.
Single story. And then my other thing I wanted to talk about was the library report. And it's about weeding, the library weeding project by sending sixteen boxes with three, I guess it's three hundred and twelve withdrawn books to the Sustainable Shelves Program offered through Baker and Taylor. The books may generate a small credit for the Platteville Public Library to use on future book purchases and ensure that any books that cannot be resold are being responsibly recycled. So my question is, well, I'll start at a little background. I used to be on the library board many years ago. And so we had a situation that we were removing books. And I thought with this new library that we would have enough space for the books that are being received. So I'm curious as to why the weeding project is being done.
I can, I'll ask Jesse, and I can get back to you.
Yes, and, and then it says and ensure that any books that cannot be resold are being responsibly recycled. Does that mean chopped up and gone to paper land, whatever you wanna call it?
I can, I will, I will inquire on her on the definition of recycling as well. If it's being recycled, it'll be putting back into another library circuit some other place, or if it's being recycled properly.
What's happening? And, and the basic question is why weeding with the size of library, I assume that we have. Thank you. Okay. Somehow I missed that, so you're at what page now? That's it.
Questions, Ken?
No more question.
Okay. Information and Discussion Resolution, Community Development Investment, C D I Grant Application, Armory Renovations.
Yes, that one's fine. So the new owners, owners of the Armory are looking to do some renovations, some improvements to that building, primarily heating system upgrades, lighting upgrades. They'd like to do some improvements to the gym, refinish the floor, possibly backboards, some scoreboards, improve the parking lot, and a few other minor things that they're, they're looking at. But all that has an expense to it, so they're looking for some opportunities for funding assistance. So one of the programs that they're looking at is through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, Community Development Investment Grant, C D I Grant, which i-if approved would grant, it's a matching grant up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So this is one we had just approved for the Updraft Brewery, same program. So this, the, the next fiscal year starts in July, so this would put them in line for, the front of the line for the next round of improvements, so we are working with them on that. But since it, that program works technically, the city is the applicant. We have to have the council approve the application of, for that grant program. So if, i-if you recall, basically, the, the grant comes to us, then we have an agreement with the building owners to turn out and then give them the money as a reimbursement after they do the improvements and then submit their invoices. So the first step is the approval of a resolution authorizing the submission of that application. So that'll be on consideration next meeting. Any questions?
So that, I'm assuming we'll come back for action in two weeks.
Yes, unless Ela tells us the schedule's gonna be a little different, then we may delay it. But at this point, we're assuming it'll be the next meeting.
Um, next, Resolution Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, C M A R.
Good evening, thank you. The Compliance Maintenance Annual Report are called C M R, is an annual report due by June thirtieth every year to the D N R. It's a self-report on our, on the condition of our treatment plant, the collection system, our operations personnel, and our financial and managerial capacity to run the system. Our treatment plant is in excellent condition, and we have exceptional staff. Our system is graded A in all areas for twenty twenty-two. Financial condition is stable, management procedures in, are in place. The resolution is required to demonstrate that the Common Council has reviewed, reviewed and approved the submission of the C M A R. Water and Sewer Commission will review it tomorrow and make a formal recommendation to the Common Council for next time.
Like to ask a few questions, even though I'm on Water and Sewer Commission. Okay, the, the first one is looking at the first page, there's no numbers here. Okay, looking at two point two, I guess that category, it says three. And then the total, number of times B O D was greater than hundred percent of design. You put down three, and then you have a three to the right of a column, so I'm looking at I find the two, and then B O D was greater than hundred percent of design, but then where's, is the three indicating a total?
Um, the, the three on the side indicates the total, which is also on the, on the bottom, total number of points. And the reason for the number of points was because in February we had B O D greater than ninety percent of the design capacity. And it says we have, we get three points for each exceedance. And so we had one exceedance or three points, which means three points deducted. So we got an, technically, a ninety-seven percent uh, uh, in this section, but still an A.
But so you're including the B O D greater than ninety percent plus the two of them that are greater than a hundred percent?
No, the, the line where, where there's a two under, under B O D greater than one hundred is, is the points for each time we exceed a hundred percent. But if you look below, there were zero exceedances. So we got zero points deducted because we did not have any uh, B O D over one hundred percent of the design capacity.
Then in his next page, just briefly, um, looking at five point two one, it says that there's yes to any of the above, please explain if plant performance is affected when receiving any of these ways. And he put down N A. Well, you put down under five two, you put a yes. On the holding tanks, you had a yes, nothing under grease traps. So I'm just curious as to why you didn't do any answering under five point two one?
I will double-check, but the idea here is that there was no effect on our system when we received these these septic and holding tank waste.
And then the compliance, uh, Platteville wastewater treatment facility. Energy consumed, natural gas consumed. It says natural gas consumed, there's nothing listed, zero, zero. Then I go to the next page, and it says on our treatment grant, natural gas consumed. Nineteen. You see what I'm looking at? I'm looking at the two pages, one is listing natural gas, and another one is not listing natural gas.
I will double-check. Let me look at this. Oh, the the part on the top of the page, if you go to the page before, it says six and six point one, six point one one. And then it says collection system pumpage. And what that refers to are the four lift stations that we have out in our system, the, the pumping stations. And we do not consume natural gas at the, uh, uh, pump stations with, they're only by electricity.
So the, this six.
So then the next page, it says seven, treatment facility, seven point one, seven point one one, treatment plant. And so in the treatment plant itself, we consume both electricity and natural gas.
But not the lift station?
But not lift station.
What I missed was the middle two lines at the bottom of the previous page.
Correct.
And then on the same page here on the left, six point three, has an energy study been performed for your pump lift stations? The answer is no. And no, it's so that mean you're never gonna perform one? You don't do them on lift stations, or what's the reason?
We haven't done one, and I don't know whether it makes a whole lot of sense to do them. I mean, we're looking at at four lift stations with an average of under two thousand kilowatt hours per month used for the four lift stations. So we're talking less than five hundred kilowatt hours for the, um, for each lift station on average. And, and so we weren't sure that doing an energy study on, on something like that w- would make a whole lot of sense.
So that goes along with
Otherwise.
Six point four one. It says what energy-efficient equipment or practices do you have planned for the future for your pump lift stations? Okay, got it. Okay. Future energy-related equipment on the next page here. I wish there were numbers on the pages. Okay.
Are we talking, are we talking six point four, or are we talking seven point three?
No, I'm, I'm going seven point two, seven two. Well, seven, seven three one would be a question to answer. What energy-efficient equipment or practice do you have planned for the future for your treatment facility? And you have N A. Nothing. Doesn't apply. So I was curious, you can always answer that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And then nine, nine point one, has an energy study been performed for your treatment facility? And you said, yes. And then you go down to part of the facility, year twenty twenty. And only talks about the aeration blower project.
Correct.
So I'll go on. I got a couple more here. Okay, I'm going to overflow those. And that's four. And then, let's see, infiltration, I asked. I wanna, I'm curious about infiltration, infiltration slash inflow. Five point one, was infiltration inflow significant in your community last year? You say no. And so my question is, how do you know? How do you know? Because infiltration involves, uh, could be broken pipe and so forth, letting water in. So how do you know that?
I, I'm, I'm sure that there is. The, what the question is talking about is, was it significant? And what, what that leads to is all the way back to the very first page where we talk about the influent monthly flow. You can see in April of twenty twenty-two, we had the one month where our average flow was just a little over one million gallons per day. And and in January, the flow was just under three quarter, or just over three quarters of a million gallons per day. Well, part of that is because the students weren't here. The other part is there is probably a little bit of inflow and infiltration in spring rains and, and snowmelt. But it's not very significant because it, it didn't make the, it didn't make the numbers jump significantly. You know, we have, we have a maximum design flow of over two, a little over two million gallons per day. And in April, our highest month, we came to just under half. So to me, I didn't think that that rose to being significant inflow.
Yeah, that's about it. Thank you very much.
See, Howard, I wanna come.
I'll bring it up tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Hey, Howard, I wanna commend you and your people for receiving an A in all areas and that our financial condition is stable.
Second name, that's great, that's great.
There was one area in here where you talked about two businesses not being in compliance out in the industrial park during the year. Just wondering if they got back into compliance.
Uh, yes, they're, they're in compliance.
Thank you.
Have questions? Okay, with that, we move into a work session. It was set up for possible interviews with uh, for the council position.
We have not had anyone that has come forward. We had a couple folks that inquired and then declined respectfully, so we currently do not have anyone from our district that is, that we know of, options before you. Looking for discussion amongst yourselves tonight to see how you would like to potentially approach with it. Certainly, staff and I might have some ideas to throw your ways, but wanna get your feel for do you want to dangle debate off the end of the dock another third time, or do we wanna try to come up with a Plan B?
Now, I had some inquiries from several, a couple people who were saying that if it were an at-large, because they're not in that particular district. Uh, one person actually said they didn't stay but a few blocks away, but they wanted to know if it could be changed to an at-large position. I don't know how that works, but I told them.
We have to, can probably confer with council on if we can re district and move things in mid-session. That might be a legal challenge, if I can guess right.
Well, as far as redistricting anything, we cannot do that, because that is developed from the census information, so we can't really change any of that as far as lines go and grabbing additional blocks or anything like that. But maybe there is a another option, Plan B. It may be a change that's happening. I don't wanna say too much because I, I do think that that is some thoughts and decisions that need to happen, maybe on a personal level, uh, before any information could come forward on that, if it is even going to. But I do, I do understand what you're saying, Lynn. I do feel that if we had an at-large position available versus, obviously, District Three is a bit of a challenge. We, we may have more interest, just because it, it grabs the whole entire city at that point. Anybody who's interested could come forward. You do not have to be within any district if it's at large. So just some things to think about.
Okay, um, one thing I thought about was making a position, since it's District Three, contains a lot of students, making it a paid position. If a student took the position, we would expect that a student would not be staying perhaps more than three years, and so they'd move on. But it would be an incentive as far as for some of them to earn some additional money and be part of city, city government. Now, we had that, we had going back in history on this, at one time, we had a student on the council. The unfortunate part was that the student pretty much followed what one person was saying. So I'd like, if a student came on, I'd like the student to be thinking for his herself and not just following somebody on the council. So my thought is the, the possibility of, of payment. Maybe that could be an incentive, I don't know. As a, as a council member, you can't vote for payment and be on the council itself. You have to wait until the next term comes up for the person. Right?
As far as if they would be paid?
In other words, if the council went back to payment, so that thi-this would not go into effect for the people that are on the council at the present time, but if people, some people on the council went on to the future council, then they could be paid if they so desire.
I mean, I guess that could be an option. I do, I, I guess I don't know what the budget is. We'd probably have to refer to Nicola on that, as far as if there's money allocated for something like that, or we would have to go through the budget process. And something like that would have to take place as a change in January, twenty twenty-four. Potentially.
It's an option we can tease out and try to explore and, and report back to you folks.
Okay.
I said that's something we can take a look at, at the legalities of trying to do a midterm increase in like a stipend or some types of a compensation, as well as identifying where the funding source would come from. So that's something that we can begin taking a look at and, and report back to you on an option like that.
As I said, my idea is, is it's an incentive. So that's the thought. And part, part of District Four has become part of District Three. That's how the change, as the change has taken place. That's how the change, there's a change is taking place. So there, there are people that are, that students that are in the new District Three. Uh, added to that District Three. And they've been moved from District Four. So, thank you.
Staff's Plan B, somebody brought up the fact that you might have a Plan B, is there?
Plan B involves potentially continuing to lobby with some of the sources that we've had. Um, Plan C involves real looking at, um, kind of the at-large thing like Lynn had talked about to see if there's a way to try to maneuver that as well, but it has to be explored.
What's the, um. The, Ken, I, I hadn't ever thought about your idea, but I guess I would kind of wonder how that would sit with everyone else. If one person was on the council that was being paid to be there.
Well, if they don't like the idea that somebody is being paid and if they wanna go and be on the council the next time, they can be paid.
Just saying, perhaps if this group of people doesn't wanna be represented, then they don't be represented, we move on for the year. I don't know what else to say, it's a, it's a free country, these people can step up and do what they need to do. We just, we just do it.
So, so what happens if the seat stays open till April?
It would just be, um, the candidate paperwork would, once again, just like the December process. We would start to kind of, um, market for that when that time comes around. And hopefully, we would have a candidate come forward that would go through the process of getting, collecting the signatures and being put on the ballot. If they didn't do that process, they could potentially do registered write-in, um, or just sort of take the chance of a write-in, um. But yeah, we, it would be available for this next election. It, it would be available, it would be on the next election anyways, whether it is filled or not filled at this point, because it is, that term is up.
Guarantee a way we could do it and that's, uh, I'll make a motion that we raise their taxes in that district by five percent. Who wants to second me? I guarantee you somebody will be here next week. Probably be on my front doorstep at ten minutes.
We shall not vote on that. There will be no vote on it, sorry.
So right now we're tracking kind of our options that we're going to take a look at is, uh, going to be at looking at a stipend or potential compensation at a midterm change. Uh, we're gonna look at with the potential of redistricting alderman type seats to see if the lines can potentially be changed, uh, during the term as well as then an option on, uh, just leaving it open for the remainder of the term. Is there other, other ideas that you folks would like to bring forward?
So my, my thought, my concern would be if we leave it open until the next term. Was gonna motivate them to even do it in, in April, if they're. Unless new people move into that district, you know, but, so I do agree with, although. But anyway, uh. But, uh. Although not maybe if we can't do the pay, but there could be some kind of incentive, something that would say, I know, well. That probably everybody can get, like something as simple as paying our water bills. You know what I'm saying? Something that won't have to come out of so much of a big budget, but it'll give them some kind of. Because if I'm with him, if you don't wanna represent your area, I mean, what do you want us to do? You know what I'm saying? It is, it is what it is. So I understand if we, if we leave it open, we still, we're still gonna have the issue of no. If it, no, who's gonna wanna do it? I think we could dress it up real pretty. Make it seem glorified.
Yeah, I'm not really sure what to do if they don't choose.
There could be the.
I just don't know, that's, that's heartening, that's disheartening, isn't it?
Tongue-in-cheek Casper approach, if we bring a resolution forward that's gonna have a, possibly a intimate impact to that district. And we'll have somebody race to the, race to the podium and say, wait a minute here.
I'll do it, yeah. We're planning that for later in the year, how's that?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What if we had, uh, nobody up for any election next year in April? And a person or person, persons get a write-in, would they be possibly the winners if they accept? How many votes you have to have to win if you're a write-in? Two, one?
Yes, yes, that can happen, um, I'm familiar with that happening in Lafayette County where nobody ran for a seat on the county board. Uh, there were two people who were written in by two votes, so it was a tie. Two votes per person, neither one of them wanted to serve, they had not wanted to be written in, it was sort of like some neighbor. And so, uh, the county board chairman approached both of them and persuaded one to sit on the board. It's not a good situation to be in, honestly, we, we want as community engagement, we want, um. We want council members that, you know, are like you folks are engaged in the process and wanting to, um, wanting to participate and, and be able to shape the direction of the city. Uh, but the, the bottom line is yes, if there were write-ins, whoever had the most write-in votes would, would win the election. But it can happen that that person never intended for their name to be written in and so then there's another. You can't force somebody to serve that didn't want to be elected.
Yeah, okay, but it can happen. Thank you.
Any other suggestions or thoughts? Okay.
So, I want, I have one more doubt. I wanna do all the people in. Like, how can we like reach out to district, to that district? Maybe with like, I don't know, a flyer that just goes in the mail to them saying how important this is. Because maybe some people just don't know that this is open, like they don't look at our page, on Facebook, they don't, we have nothing in the mail, I don't know, I don't live in that district, but. I'm just saying, is there another way we can reach out to the district before we get? This could be something that that's what we wanna do, it just don't know, or, or we'll be really good doing. I create a flyer for you, let me create a flyer, then it's.
No, I, I do think that those are great ideas, um, I think maybe if there is an interest, I know Ken's kinda hit on this and Kathy has a little bit. If there's an interest for, um, to get student involvement or involvement from the campus, perhaps reaching out to um, professors that may have students that might be interested in something like this, that they would be interested in being able to put something like this on their resume, serving in this capacity while they are here in the city of Platteville. There may be an interest in like Lynn is addressing, perhaps they just don't know about this.
Has anything gone out in the, in the water and sewer bills as a stuffer?
We can certainly do that, yes, we can, we can, I don't know how easy it would be to only hit that district, I'm sure there's a way that we can make that happen. Um, if not, it's certainly, we can send it out citywide and, um. Maybe just include a map that says this is what we're after and maybe it's somebody else that lives in District One potentially has a friend living in District Three and maybe the friend didn't see it and that person can say, hey, you are included in this, are you interested? So that's, that is an option.
Yes, because I put it on my Facebook page, I put exactly what's on the, and I put it on my Facebook page, so.
Perhaps, um. Paul shouldn't have left so soon.
Perhaps that's why Paul did leave so soon.
Okay, so. Come up with some.
Okay, I think we've got, um, three and a half to four things there that we'll, we'll kick around and try to see if we can boil down.
The unfortunate thing is that with the virus, people became used to more stay at home. And so volunteer work became less. And so now it's difficult in many places that I see to get volunteers to work. Thank you.
So, okay, uh, last item. Entertain a motion to.
Motion that we adjourned tonight.
I second it. Candace, cop? Yes, parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.